Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I would first like to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Vice Chair Chicalini to please lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands on one nation, in the great broadened individual, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to ask if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Deborah Dion Foster was a teacher and volunteer in our town. You could always see her helping out with the breakfasts at the American Legion, and she loved working at the library on the Board of Trustees, and she was a strong supporter of the Saugus Theater Company. She was also named Woman of the Year in 2019. The second resident is Anthony De La Piana. I first met Anthony way back in the eighties when we both worked at the John Hancock together. He was incredibly intelligent and helpful. His daughter Elizabeth is the reporter for the Lin Daily Item. If we could all please have a moment of silence at this time to remember these two people. Thank you. I would first like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome our Town Manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, and Meredith, our Clerk.
Hi, Meredith.
Ladies and gentlemen of the audience and those watching at home. Please know that this meeting is being recorded. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have with us Stanley Wong representing the Cowloon. The Cowloon is having its 75th year anniversary this year, and we are delighted to have Mr. Wong with us tonight so that we could present him with a citation. I am sure that we've all gone to celebrations at the Cowloon over the years, different events, entertainment, as well as lunch and dinner. This themed restaurant is a landmark for our town, and no matter where you go, especially in Massachusetts, everyone knows the Cowloon. This building itself is known for its architecture and its 30-foot tiki statue above its entrance. I personally always loved the lagoon and the ship deck, and of course, the Saugus wings are delicious. I want to personally thank the Wong family for their dedication and generosity to Saugus over the years, and I'm sure each one of the board members would like to say a few words. And Mr. Wong, if you would please come up to our podium. Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, please, Selectman Riley, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Just want to congratulate Stanley and your brothers and sisters and, you know, with your family starting the business and built it to an empire. Congratulations on your 75th, and we look forward to celebrating with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've had the pleasure of becoming very close with the entire Wong family over the years, Stanley, Bobby, Andy, Donald. Just incredible people. It's just amazing to see their operation and how they run it. It's, you know, to look at their operation now and to think this may be one of the last two years, it doesn't even seem real because the business that they're doing today is probably better than they've ever done, and that's a tribute to the hard work and dedication. And I can't thank you enough as a selectman and as a resident of the town for what you do for us. Most generous family in the town. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectmen, Serena?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Stanley, your family's a top-notch family. The restaurant's top-notch. You're one of the families that really made Route One what it is today. You have Frank Joffeeter at the Hilltop, Gus Luongo at the, uh, what is he? Augustine's. Mr. Casta-Buridia Prince and your family at the Cowloon Restaurant. I was happy to meet all of them gentlemen throughout my life, and you guys are great. Your family's great. And I'll go into Boston, Stanley, I'll give you a story. I'll go into Boston. People will ask me if I'm at a restaurant or bar or something, they'll say, "Where are you from?" I say, "Saugus." They say, "Where's Saugus?" I say, "Have you been to Cowloon's restaurant?" "Oh, yeah." I said, "Well, let's Saugus." But anyhow, good luck. We'll look in the future, and I'll see you tomorrow night. And I happen to be at your 50th anniversary when I was on the board in 2000, so I'm getting to do two anniversaries. Thank you.
I just wanted to...
It's Thursday night now, right?
I mean, not Thursday.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make sure you had the right day now.
This is a public service announcement. It's been canceled to Thursday because of the rain. Thank you.
Thank you. And Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot's already been said. Stanley, you know, your family goes back with mine. My dad was very dear friends with all of you, and I grew up around all of you, and I think you guys are truly amazing. And the one thing Selectmen Serena said about the other families and the legacies of the families, you know, the mainstays in town. What's interesting about yours is how many generations it's passed through and success and grown, and it's very unique. We don't have a lot of families that have gone through multi-generations and remain successful. So the fact that you are here and a pillar in the community, and you set the bar for what it's like to give back, and I think everybody understands what you do for our town. Whenever somebody's in need, there's a fundraiser, there's something, Cowloon's always the first one to step up, and that doesn't go unnoticed. And you guys are special. You have something really special, and as Anthony said, you know, it's, there's going to come a time where we're all going to reflect back and say, "Wow, they really were amazing to have in town as a pillar." So I personally thank you for everything that you and your family and all the generations have done for our town and set the standard for what it's like to be a restaurateur and a business owner in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to echo what everyone else said, your dedication and generosity to our community is overwhelming, and it is noticed by all. So thank you for everything that you and your family have done over the last 75 years. So I'm going to read the citation. "To all persons whom these presents shall come, be it known this 19th day of August 2025 that the Town of Saugus sends its congratulations to the Cowloon Restaurant on its 75th anniversary, and it's signed by the Saugus Board of Selectmen, all five of us." And if it's okay with you, would like to take a picture? Is that okay?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Chicalini?
I would like to make a motion that we take out of order the appointment of Alberto Morganti for his request for reappointment for constable.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. So tonight, we have Alberto Morganti with us, and he's requesting reappointment as constable to the Town of Saugus. And he would be asking for another three-year term, and that would be expiring August 31st, 2028. Good evening.
Good evening. How are we?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm hanging in there. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for your service to our town. Thank you for putting me in the position the last three years to serve our community. As you guys know, I've always tried to do a little something to stay involved, and I've been able to participate in the judicial process, the legal system, and I want to thank you guys personally for giving me that opportunity the past three years.
Well, thank you for your service to our town. Does anybody have any questions they would like to ask Mr. Morganti? Is there anything else that you would like to add?
No.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
I will make a motion that we grant the request of reappointment to Alberto Morganti as constable in the Town of Saugus. His appointment will expire August 31st, 2028.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also have a continuation of my bond. I don't know if you guys wanted me to give that to you now or mail that in.
You could give it to our Clerk Meredith. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
Make a motion that we go back to the original order of business.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. So under correspondence, we have the Board of Selectmen to approve the appointment of election workers and police officers for elections. And we all have in our packet a letter from Ellen Shenna, who's our town clerk. And it says, "Attached is the annual election worker appointment list for 2025. Most on the list have been election workers for the Town of Saugus for many years. We encourage students 16 and older to work for the community service or paid positions. When school starts, our office begins to encourage Saugus students to work the polls. With the local election in November, I will be holding a training session for our election workers in October. Lastly, during this time period, we do acquire additional election workers not on the list. In addition, with the new Votes Act of 2022, the Board of Selectmen will need to appoint Saugus police officers to protect the precincts. Attached is a list of qualified police officers to work the polls. The Board will vote to delegate authority to the Chief of Police, the Town Clerk, to station offices in the six locations, 10 precincts. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Ellen Joyce Shenna." And she is our Saugus Town Clerk. So we need a motion to approve the appointment of election workers and police officers for elections as outlined in our town clerk's August letter. Thank you. And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The next item under correspondence is a letter that we received that I'm going to read into the record. This is to the Town of Saugus. It's regarding the surrender of Section 12 Wine and Malt with Cordial/Liquors. Dear Board, this office represents the above-mentioned licensee, Meat Barbecue Inc., doing business as K-Town Barbecue at 910 Broadway Suite A, Saugus, Mass. 1906, the holder of a wine and malt with cordial liquor, ABCC, number 06733-RS-1078, in the Town of Saugus, which has recently acquired an all-alcoholic beverage license. Please accept this as written notice that the Meat Barbecue Inc., doing business K-Town Barbecue, will be surrendering the wine and malt with cordial liquor to the Town of Saugus effective immediately. Should you have any questions or require any further assistance, please contact my office. Sincerely, Yakang Wong Esquire." So what we would need is just a motion to accept the surrender of this alcoholic license. And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I would like the Board to know that Victus Mediterranean has been contacted by our Clerk. He has come in. He's already met with Meredith to go over the paperwork that is needed, so that is moving forward. The next item on the agenda is under Citizens' Comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board?
Edwin Lasala, 37 Highland Avenue, Saugus.
Good evening.
What's that?
Good evening.
I still can't understand what you're saying.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. I called you Friday. You never called me back.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I called you Friday," and you don't...
You called me?
Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't get the call. I call everybody back.
You never called me back. I figured it was because it was me.
I apologize. I did not. Did you call the office or did you call my cell phone?
I called the number, whatever number it is, under Selectmen.
Okay. I'm sorry. I did not get that call. I would have called you back.
No, I figured you saw it was me and you didn't want to talk to me.
Oh, no, that's not the case at all. I'm sorry that I did not call you back. I do call everybody back.
Well, the reason why I'm here, I want some clarification on the time change on Highland Ave. What was the purpose? What were you trying to achieve?
The principal of the school contacted us, as well as the people from the Saugus Business Education Collaborative that I'm a part of, and they discussed that it being closed off, that people can't go up and down until 5:00 was extreme because that means that they have to go up and around.
Oh, gosh, I did.
And so the question, so what they requested, and this was advertised for both streets.
You told me that before.
Highland Ave and PS Memorial Drive, because we had two separate hearings and two separate advertisements that we roll it back to 3:00. So she came and spoke, and the chairman of the school committee, Vincent Serena, also came and spoke in favor of making that change.
Well, she has a PhD in education, correct? The principal?
I believe so.
Well, my father had a PhD. Taught organic chemistry at Mass College of Pharmacy. And he told me what a PhD means. You have to get your bachelor's, your master's, then your PhD. And all that was, it was bullshit, more shit, and piled higher and deeper. So you ought to tell her to state her education and leave the neighborhood alone. But I don't understand the times. What are you trying to improve? I mean, 1:00 to 3:00, it doesn't help the school traffic at all.
They said that, we're not supposed to be having a back and forth because this is public comment and this isn't on the agenda.
Well, I'm commenting.
But I will say that they thought that that would actually help the people on Highland Ave because then they can get to their homes after 3:00, and there wasn't much traffic between 3:00 and 5:00.
It doesn't help us at all. You should have talked to the people that live in the street. All you're doing is opening up Highland Ave to the overflow from Main Street.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
Just like to make a couple comments. So I understand where you're coming from. I do. But when we advertise those hearings, we also get recommendations from the police and fire department to see if there's anything they think would fall out of the norm by changing the times. They came back and agreed with the recommendation. So we could ask if they, you know, for more information. They didn't have any objections to the request that was put in to change the times to that time slot. We also didn't have anybody speak against the request.
Because you put it in the paper, I didn't know.
I'm just explaining to you, like, how I usually go through the process. I'm not a traffic expert. I rely on the police department and their opinion.
Well, they were absolutely useless. As far as traffic...
I can't listen to that. I'm sorry.
I don't care if you can listen to it or not. I get a First Amendment right to speak my mind.
Yeah, but you don't have to refer to the police as useless. That's not fair.
I have never seen them write a citation since the school opened. They're never there. They don't do a damn thing. So in my opinion, they're useless as far as traffic control goes.
Oh, okay.
Not in general. No, they do their job.
My father was a police officer. That's why I'm saying it.
That's fine. My father was a pharmacist.
Well, that's good. I don't say pharmacists are useless.
Well, some of them are.
Madam Chairman, if I could, we don't want to do back and forth. Ted, I know you live right on the corner. We also have Mr. Derigo here who lives on Highland Ave. If we were to bring this up again, because we've, I mean, we'll bring it up until we get it right. If it's not right, we can certainly schedule a hearing again and look at the times. But since you have most impact, you're right there in the corner, what times do you think would be best?
Oh, for the school? I don't know. I've been thinking about this. I mean, if you had it, do not enter from 3:00 to 5:00. That would protect us from the overflow from Main Street. Then it would allow this traffic from the school, when they get out at quarter past 2:00, to go down Highland Ave. Right now, they got one way out. You know, to go down PS Drive or route into Route 1, and everybody's afraid of that. I mean, I go there all the time. But to me, that would make sense. But you have to have traffic enforcement, which is not in this town. There is absolutely, at least in my area, there is zero traffic enforcement. Like, I retired before the school opened, and I've never seen anybody get written a citation or even stopped, for that matter. And I've talked to the chief about it, and it falls on deaf ears. And you get parking control. I'm always having someone blocking my driveway. Their parking control, he's useless. He don't do a thing. The only time he comes down is when I get down and talk to the chief.
So you want it rolled back to the 5:00 again? That's what you're up here asking for.
Well, I'm just thinking, when I said 3:00 to 5:00, would benefit the people picking their kids up from school to be able to use Highland Ave. Because right now, they can only go down PS Drive to get out or route into Route 1. And most people don't like going out into Route 1. You know, they think it's too dangerous. I do it all the time, but it's no different than pulling out on any establishment on Route 1. But to me, it just doesn't seem like it benefits the school at all. I have no problem changing the times if it benefits the school traffic.
They, again, we shouldn't be going back and forth like this because that's not what public comment is all about. But we can, I could reach out to Carla, as well as the school committee and the police, and we could do it all. Again, we did a lot of public announcement when we made the change. There were people that got up and spoke. Everybody spoke in favor. Nobody spoke against it. But we can, as Selectman Cogliano said, we can bring it up again and have that discussion again if this is impacting your quality of life.
Well, 98% of the people with that stop sign in front of the school do not stop. So every time I'm coming into my driveway, it's like I'm running the gauntlet. You know, I had 324 miles on my truck. I just bought it. And a guy come whipping around the corner, so I had to back up quick, and I hit my tree. Tent in my bumper, you know. It's just, it's a gauntlet because people don't stop. They don't square rough when they come down the street. They just cut across.
I understand what you're saying, but what do you want us to do? You're here, and this is the second time you've come before the Board. And we all hear you, and we all empathize with where you live on that corner. We all live in different places that have issues with traffic. What are you requesting us to do at this time?
Well, I just don't think the times that you change it do benefit the school at all.
Well, according to the school committee chairman and according to the principal of the school and different members of the school committee that were at the meeting, the superintendent at the SBC meeting, they all requested that the time be changed, and it would have helped the schools. So again, what we could do, because we're not going to go back and forth anymore. What we could do is, I could reach out to Carla again and tell her what your concern is, and then perhaps you and Carla can have a conversation. How does that sound?
That's fine, but I doubt it will happen.
I will talk with Carla tomorrow, and I will ask her. And I just checked my voicemails. I don't have a voicemail from you, so I don't know exactly where you called. But if you do call me, I promise I will call you back. Thank you.
It just, the times don't seem right to me to benefit the school. I have no problem changing times to benefit the school traffic because it's a real cluster when they're getting out of school at quarter past 2:00. And the way you have the time now, 1:00 to 3:00, they can't go down Highland Ave.
Okay. Thank you.
So are you shutting me off?
No, I thought you were done.
No. I guess I am now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pat Derigo. I live at 11 Highland Avenue in the Town of Saugus. I've been a resident for 66 years and a voter for 66 years. I have two items on my piece of paper here I'd like to discuss and bring up. Behind 11 Highland Ave, behind 11 Highland Avenue and 13 Highland, there's a brook, which I believe it's the Shoot Brook they call. The shrubbery, the trees and everything have grown out of control. It's stopping and slowing down the flow of water which enters in my basement. I went to the Town DPW numerous times, and it's on a list, three years now, and it's still on a list. I think this is something that should have to be done. You people, the Board, the Town, whatever it is, have an easement there of 10 feet, which you people are responsible for, and it's on record. I would like to have that brook cleaned up. I'm at the age of today, I cannot do it. I used to take care of it. My parents used to take care of it, but I cannot do it no more. My age and my health, that's the first issue. The second, I don't want to go into details and everything else. You have the right to cross my property. I've told the DPW that and everything else, and we're on a list. Three years is enough waiting.
Mr. Town Manager, do you think we could put this on, have the DPW take a look at Shoot Brook, please?
Sure. I can definitely have them look at it. I do know that they have like a master plan that they work off of and that there's a rotation so that they do look at different brooks, and those are done, you know, whether it's two, three, four years, depending on the brook, and they do brook cleaning, and that goes on. They put it out to bid, so we can find out. But they generally know of all the areas that they have, and they go on that. So, but I'll definitely bring this up and let the DPW know so that they can have it addressed.
Thank you very much. So what's your second issue?
Pardon?
The Town Manager is going to talk with the DPW regarding Shoot Brook and getting that cleaned up.
I'd appreciate that very much.
So he's going to follow up on that. So what you said, there were two things that you wanted to bring up. What was the second?
The second thing is, I wanted to discuss is, they just put up new signs. No parking on Highland Avenue, up by the high, near the high school, and one down at the brook and on Talbot Ave. They have the signs facing the street. They have the signs facing the street. People that park there waiting for their kids can't read the sign. They're putting the wrong space. They should be facing the traffic, not facing the middle of the street.
That's another thing for the DPW to take a look at. Mr. Town Manager?
I don't know where they got their common sense for doing that, is putting them facing the street. Nobody can see it. The cars pull up, they don't see a sign.
The town manager just said that he will have the DPW take a look at that issue as well.
Thank you. And part of the other thing is, they got to do something with the speeding on that street. I know it's a tough thing for the police department to monitor. But if they would suggest of putting in mind the board and the town manager to put speed bumps there, that would slow down the traffic and it would flow a lot easier. That's my input for the board. I mean, you got to do something. If you look on Highland Avenue any day this week, you'll see skid marks from Highland Avenue going up to my property from them speeding and racing up. It's only a matter of time you're going to have somebody that's going to get killed. And especially now with these new motor scooters out. They run by electric and the bikes, they fly down there in between traffic and everything else. Something has to be done on Highland Avenue. It's been put off now since the school has been built. They said they're going to do something, they're going to... I don't know the word to use. They were going to investigate it, I'll use that word. But it's something has to be done on Highland Avenue. It's terrible. And it ain't only the kids speeding. It's the parents, it's the teachers, and everybody else up there. They're all flying to go to work, and it's terrible. It's only a matter of time you're going to have a body on that street. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chairman, one point before Mr. Derigo leaves.
Yes.
Highland Ave has sidewalks on the left side going towards the high school. On the right side, there's no sidewalks because the telephone poles are there. But if you look at every single property from the beginning of Highland Ave, which is where Mr. Derigo lives, all the way to the high school, every single lawn is destroyed from the kids walking on it. So, we, as a town, should look at doing something there, whether we can get a sidewalk in or what. But every single lawn is ruined from the kids walking on that side of the street. When they have a sidewalk on the other, they still choose to walk on the right. So, we should look at something for the residents as far as cleaning that area up or maybe getting some form of a sidewalk in there.
So, just to...
Yes, of course.
We're happy to look into it. So, when we did the project and we did a full reclamation and put new sidewalks on the other side, we looked at putting sidewalks on both sides, and we tried to do that. If you look at, it's basically financially not feasible because we don't own the property. So, just to understand how it works, is you have the curb, and then you have telephone poles. Those are owned, and they have an easement. So, they're not our property. So, in other words, they have an easement there. So, for us to be able to put a sidewalk, we'd have to narrow the street, which it was never advisable. You'd make the street smaller, would be more problematic for traffic and safety. Or you'd have to have eminent domain and take property to move and then pay to have the telephone poles moved back onto eminent domain when we would do a taking of all the people's property on that street. That's why we weren't able to do it. We tried. I tried to figure out 10 ways to Sunday to do it, and we just weren't able to do it. And the amount of narrowing is so dramatic to put a sidewalk in that meets ADA regulations and all that. It just, we weren't able to do it. But I do, you know, I drive down there often. So, we'll see if there's something we can do with the, you know, grass or trying to maintain something. But for some reason or another, the sidewalks on the other side, the kids walk on the grass side. You can't make this stuff up, you know what I mean? It's like if there's a barrel there, they'll throw the cup over there. So, but we'll take a look at what we can do to try to spruce it up.
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, may I interrupt you, please? Mr. Manager, 80% of the kids that come down that street work walking the street. They do not use the sidewalk for some reason. I don't know what it is. They all walk in the street. And you got the kids that are on these bikes and scooters, they're doubling them up on one scooter. It's only, you're looking for a catastrophe. And something has to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. We're now timed for our public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Select will conduct a public hearing on the application of Stephen R. Kalman, trustee of SRK Realty Trust, owner of 4 Hewlett Street, Saugus, Mass. To modify the special permit S2 to allow for construction business, a change of hours, the addition of a number of pickup trucks, and allowance of various vehicles, and a mini excavator to park outside, the trailer to be stored outside. This is map block lot 64/3/4, O plan number 3022, O lot number 23 and 24. This hearing will be held in the Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 298 Central Streets, Saugus, Mass. On August 19th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m.
Just one more thing. Pat brought up signs, the do not enter signs at the end of PS Drive or run them parallel with the streets where you can't see them. They should be turned so you can see them from either side. My wife complains about it all the time. She says, you can't even see the signs.
Okay, we're in the middle of a hearing now. We're in the middle of a hearing now. I just started a hearing.
Oh, I didn't know you stopped.
Yes, I started my first public hearing. Thank you. Hi, would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
We didn't say public comment or disclosure.
We have a second public comment later on tonight.
You didn't say that.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Attorney Brian McGrail. I am here on behalf of 4 Hewlett Street, requesting a modification of an existing special permit. The petition is in this matter of Stephen R. Kalman, trustee of SRK Realty Trust, the current owner of 4 Hewlett Street, the property, and ANJ Construction Corp., the prospective purchaser of the property, here on behalf of the current trust owner, Stephen Kalman is here, the current owner of the property, and the prospective owner, ANJ Construction, Anthony Natale is here, who is the principal of that entity. If I may, Madam Chair, I have some handouts for the board that might be helpful, my presentation, if I could approach.
Thank you. I think we have most of this already.
In 2001, the Kalmans were granted a special permit by the Board of Select at that time for a contractor's yard to operate their roofing business. And they purchased the property at that time. They then successfully operated that roofing business on the property for over 20 years. The Kalmans have decided now to sell the property and move on. And in that process, they sought out what they thought would be a good fit for the property in the neighborhood. They were connected with Mr. Natale and his company, ANJ Construction Corp. And after site visits and discussions, they both thought this would be a great location for ANJ to call home. As I mentioned, the petition is requesting a modification of the existing special permit related to the property granted on June 19, 2001, for the contractor's yard. We've given a copy of that with the application in your packet tonight. The special permit, the existing special permit, is unique and very specific in nature, thus requiring the requested modification to allow ANJ to operate at the property. This was confirmed with your building inspector through review and discussions with him. As you may note, that special permit is limited to a roofing business. Can't get much more specific than that. And it allows for very specific vehicles that do not match ANJ's vehicles. The sale of the property to ANJ is conditioned upon the granting of a modification of this existing special permit to account for ANJ's Construction Corp.'s anticipated business activities at the property. Let me tell you a little bit about ANJ, if I may, and why they are a good fit. First of all, they don't do any fabrication, such as machine shop or auto body. No fabrication involved. ANJ is in the business of constructing children's playgrounds. ANJ has four trucks consisting of a Ford F-650, a Ford F-550, and two Ford F-250 pickups. They also have a mini excavator and trailer. As I mentioned, they construct children's playgrounds all throughout the area. So, we believe they're a good fit because during the majority of the construction season, spring, summer, and fall, all of this equipment, the large equipment, the F-650, the F-550, the mini excavator and trailer, the majority of time, they're not at the property. They're going from site to site because that's their busy season. They would use the property to store some of their equipment in the building, some of the playground equipment that went fabricated there, but it would just be a storage area that the smaller trucks would get when they needed their tools. But the primary purpose would be to park these vehicles, the larger trucks and the mini excavator and trailer during the winter season. I've submitted some photographs of the property and also a site plan that was prepared by Engineering Alliance showing where the proposed vehicles could be parked and the equipment storage could take place. I wanted to stress that there is no office staff that would be at this property. There's no customers that would visit this property. It's really just kind of a staging location for the company. As you'll take note, this is a very isolated and secluded area. We do respect the fact that access to this area does go through certain residential, past residential homes, and that's respected. And that's why we think this is a good fit because trucks won't be going in and out, machinery in and out all day. There'll be no fabrication noise for the neighborhood, as I've mentioned. I have submitted letters of support through the chair from neighbors. And in the packet I just handed out, if you flip through it, there's a color-coded plan. Our property is highlighted in yellow. And all of the green properties that are highlighted are those properties that have submitted letters of support for our application. Those were obtained by Mr. Kalman by going to visit the neighbors to let them know what was going on and to explain the nature of this business in an effort to get their support, which he was able to obtain from a number of them. As far as the, why we're requesting a special permit to be modified, as I mentioned, is to account for ANJ's business specifically. And we're asking that, you know, in addition to a contractor's yard for roofing, that it be modified to allow for a construction business. And also, currently, the special permit has a limit of hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're respectfully requesting that that be expanded from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. because Mr. Natale might need to go in with his pickup truck and pick up certain things earlier in the morning. We're asking to allow that the trucks that I specified are trucks of that size and nature because, you know, trucks can change over time. People have Ford F-650s, that's a mid-sized dump truck. Maybe in three years, it turns into a Chevy or a GMC. So, trucks of that nature, similar size, could park on the property in the designated parking areas. And also, to allow for the mini excavator and trailer to be put on the property where the storage area is designated on the plan. There are conditions that are currently in the special permit. I'd like to highlight those that certainly we are not asking to be modified. Those include that, except for the trucks and trailer and mini excavator, that there would be no storage of materials outside the building, no playground equipment or anything of that nature. That is fine. There's no issues with that. Again, there's currently a condition with no fabrication on the property. We're fine with that condition to remain, not asking for that to be changed. No storage of hazardous materials, not requesting any change on that. There's a provision in there of no night or weekend work. Mr. Natale is fine with that. Again, so no residences will be interrupted when people come and go and going during the weekend hours. And then also, no on-street parking, which we're fine with that also. So, that is our request, Madam Chair. We're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. But just to summarize, I just want to make sure that we all understand. So, the whole lot itself is .2 acres, which is just like over 8,000 square feet. And you're going from one van, two one-ton trucks, and one three-quarter ton truck, to a Ford F-650, which is a big giant diesel truck, a Ford F-550, which is almost as big, two Ford F-250s, an excavator and a trailer, and you want to park all of those outside. And what is going to be inside?
Well, there could be a spot for, you know, some of the trucks could fit inside.
But you're asking for all of these to be outside?
We were, but we're happy to, you know, entertain any requests that the board would have.
You know, we've had some issues with that whole area because it all floods. I mean, it floods pretty significantly. I talked with the Conservation Commission. We did not get a referral from them, but they would have liked to have been involved with this as well and to have their voice be heard when I spoke with them today. So, with that said, I'm going to open it up for board members to have questions. Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. So, on your chart that you had here with the green houses, I would have been number seven for 20 years through 2018. I lived on that street in Lot 7. I think I might have misunderstood. I spoke to the building commissioner. In your letter, number one, you state that in addition to allowing a contractor's yard for a roofing business, that the special permit also allow for a construction business. We're going to be changing it. We're not going to be adding to it. So, an S2 permit runs with the property in perpetuity. And you're asking for a modification, but there will be no more construction completed at that. There's no more construction business running out of that yard, correct?
No more roofing business?
Roofing, yes.
Correct, no more.
No more roofing. So, my question is, I am definitely not comfortable with storing the trucks outside. And I'll tell you why. One of the main reasons why I moved off of that street is the amount of flooding that has occurred on Beachview Avenue and that street specifically, Hewlett Street, is unconscionable. The water, at times, I drive a large SUV. At one time, moving my car down that street, the water was inside my vehicle. That's how high the water was. So, parking any type of vehicle, diesel, non-diesel, whatever, I don't care if it was a, you know, a small pickup, a Suzuki Samurai pickup. The risk when flooding occurs is so high down in that area, and it's gotten exponentially worse over the last 10 to 15 years. What used to be a 100-year storm now becomes like an every-other-year storm. And, you know, I know they're trying. We've met with delegation. One of the people in the audience we met with about floodgate projects and stuff to try to ease the burden. But I'll tell you right now, some of those parking spots that you have labeled on your chart, those are literally a swimming pool at certain parts. No exaggeration. Like, when I tell you feet of water, not inches. Feet of water. So, storing an excavator, I'm the most pro-business guy. It's what I do for a living. I support all my clients. But I just, I have to caution you down there, that area. I lived at 27 Beachview. I witnessed it. You know, if you want to come up and speak, you're more than welcome to speak. But I'm just telling you, the flooding down there is out of control. And I still have a relative who lives on the street, on Beachview, and you just need to understand what you're getting into because that is a high, high, high flood zone, and it happens more often than not. I'm not trying to scare away anybody and your prospective customer, but because I lived it, like I said, on this chart, I'm Lot 7. So, you have a letter of, it looks like Guido in Lot 8 wrote a letter of support. I'm seven, or that is seven, I don't even know, I don't know what the numbers are. It's seven, right? Yeah, so that was me with my shed in the backyard, and number seven, I, you know, I could tell you, I lost a Jeep in my driveway to flooding. It literally was inside up to almost the seat of the Jeep. So, I just, I need to caution you, like I said, as far as business, I'll support business any way I possibly can, but from an environmental standpoint, the risk of those vehicles being outside, also for you as a contractor relying on those to do your business, there's a huge risk there if they weren't lifted and inside, there's a huge risk that those could be, could flood out. So, I just want to, I want to be clear about that. And I do agree with Madam Chair's comment. I had spoken to the Building Inspector, and I was like, I'll swap a dump truck for a van any day. Like, if it's a one-for-one swap, the risk is on you, but their requirement in the S-2 permit is everything's parked inside. No street parking, no property parking, that's what's in the S-2 permit right now.
I was, I was confused, I think, I think it could be read that way, but I don't think it was well-written.
Well, yeah, maybe not, but it says, "No storage of work product, material exterior to the building, no storage of hazardous materials, all materials and equipment to be stored inside buildings."
So, it would be a question of whether equipment's a truck. And I'm not, I was confused by it.
Well, they didn't, they were very specific as to what they allowed, so the vehicles include one van, two this, and a three-quarter by the business. So, I read that as the intent was that the materials and equipment, including the vehicles, I don't know, I mean, obviously.
To be honest with you, I agree that it could be read that way, and that's one of the reasons why we sought to modify it, so.
Yeah.
Your point's well-taken.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying from my perspective, like I said, I'll listen to my fellow board members too, I haven't, I'm just telling you the way, if I was owning a business down there, I would be very nervous on the nights that the moon tides hit, I would be down there watching to make sure that my vehicles are not on that street because you're going to have insurance losses, I guarantee it. It's, you want to come up to the podium?
Yeah, if you want to speak, please come to the podium and give your name and address too, please.
I'm Stephen Kalman, I'm the current owner, and as you know, I bought it sometime June 2021.
2001.
2001, I'm sorry. Sorry, 2001. And all those years, we had water in the building, maybe an inch of water at once. We had a couple of vehicles outside and never got anything that high next to the building. I agree, Beachview Ave and Bel Air, I mean, you could be up to your knees, but for some reason, that end of Hewlett never really got that much water. I think it's higher than the others. There is water, I don't want to make it sound like there is no water, but it's not a swimming pool in that location.
No, but across from the elevator place is the swimming pool. You have to drive through the swimming pool to get to Hewlett.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, but if the vehicle's parked outside, the vehicle will be okay. If they're driving through that, depending on how high it is, I mean, we used to, we never had a problem driving through it, we always drove through it with our trucks.
Yeah.
But, I mean, again, a Jeep or a smaller vehicle would definitely have it.
And I'm even thinking about little things, like the amount of water that I had to drive through across from the elevator company, the amount of water, and he actually has been here to speak about the flooding and the extensive flooding, the amount of water, when those trucks drive through it, whether it's grease or oil or whatever that's on the vehicles themselves, it does have to go somewhere, it could wash in somewhere, so I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I think what I'd, me personally, I'm going to let everyone else speak, I think I want to go down and see it and maybe have a site visit down there so that I can physically see the location, because I was down there when McGave Towin was down there for a while.
Sure.
And they had tow trucks, and, you know, and I supported that, and I lived in the neighborhood when they were there, and that's fine, it's also an industrial area, I get that. But I just, I'm trying to be cautious for the environment, the neighbors, but also the property, who's going to be the property owner.
Sure.
Because then they'll come back to us and say, well, you gave me an S-2 permit, I parked all my vehicles out there, and, you know, everything got destroyed with a hundred-year storm, and then we, you know, it's egg on our face, and I just, I feel like I need to put it out there for full disclosure because I did witness it for 20 years, and it got worse, not better.
I don't, I completely agree with that. I mean, that end of the street in front of the elevator company is tough.
So now I built a house in the tallest part of Saugus, that if we get water up there, an arc isn't going to help, because that's, I did the extreme opposite, I'm on a 40-foot cliff.
Right.
As Selectmen Chicalini said, we've been down to that part, it was extreme, extreme flooding. I went down to the elevator company, and I saw the damage that was done there, and the gentleman has spoken to us quite a few times about the issues that we have with the flooding. It's not a little bit, it is extreme, extreme flooding that's down there. Who else would like to speak?
Madam Chairman.
Selectmen Serena.
Just to touch on what Selectmen Panetta and Chicalini said, I agree the flooding down there is horrible. Besides the trucks, I'm more concerned about the hydraulic oil coming out of the excavator. You get hydraulic oil down there, it's going to seep all over the neighborhood. I don't know how high that's going to be off the ground. I don't understand why you just don't work under the S-2 permit that you have now, I think you might be better off. I don't know how high the bottom floor of your garage is, even if you park the vehicles in there, because in 1982, the previous owner, Mr. Marshall, went before the Conservation Commission to build that building, and they were supposed to go up to elevation 10, and he never filed orders or conditions from the Conservation Commission, which in turn, they never filed a certificate of compliance to see if that property was up to the height and if the property was all graded. So, the water issue is a concern down there, and any equipment with hydraulic fluid would be even a bigger problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen Serena, Selectmen Calviano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just for the record, I own Lots 6 and 5 on Beachview Ave, and, you know, listening to the comments of my fellow board members tonight, I agree with Selectmen Chicalini that it's probably in our best interest to take a site visit and see what we can come up with from that, but I think that would definitely help.
Thank you. Madam Chairman. Selectmen Wally.
I just have a question. From the original S-2 permit, it allowed four vehicles, were those, and are they still stored inside the building?
I'm sorry, they were stored inside the building, correct?
They were stored inside the building.
Correct.
So, you'd be able to at least have four vehicles that would be inside?
Correct. Different-sized vehicles, a couple of them, but, yeah.
Because they're bigger, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
May Mr. Natali give a little information on his vehicles and their presence at the property that might be helpful to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as for the water impact, I'm well aware of it, you know, being in construction, it's kind of what we do, you know. What we're storing there is just play equipment, which is, you know, it's metal, it's steel, whatever, so I'm not worried so much about that getting damaged if there was a, you know, high-water table at one point. In addition to that, the vehicles aren't always going to be stored there, it's just that, you know, in-between job, right? I have to put the vehicles there, but for the most part, I take mine home, my operator takes his home, and the 550 and 650 are parked on-site, so. And we're, sometimes we're in Boston, sometimes right now we're in Lowell, all right, so it's easier for us just to take them and leave them on the job site, but it's that what-if, right, that I need to have, because currently I rent at 99 Broadway, 999 Broadway, Saugus, Palumbo Properties, they told me I can't park my trucks there. The 550 and 650, the 250s are parked there, you know, when we need to. So, that's kind of what it is, it's not something that we're always going to use, but again, we can't park inside with the 650 and 550, they're too large of vehicles. As for the environmental impact, I really, I don't have too much to say about that, you guys are well aware of the environmental impact of the vehicles. But as for the water concern, again, I'm in construction, I understand it, until I experience it as yourself, I won't really know and get a good gist of it, but for the most part, the equipment that's going to be stored inside, I'm not concerned if there was to get, you know, that.
We can show you pictures.
What's that?
We can show you pictures.
I believe it, no, no, trust me, listen, a regular rainstorm, I've gone down there and I've just checked it out, just to see, and, you know, I can see, and I'm sure, you know, one of those events that happen, and again, if they might be happening annually, I don't, I'm not.
They're happening much more often.
Right.
And we're looking for some help with the state because we're concerned with not just the businesses, but the residents that live there as well.
Right.
And we certainly don't want to put you and your business in harm's way.
I appreciate that.
Selectmen Chicalini.
Permission to approach the podium for them?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah.
This is what I, Mr. Mantra.
Yeah, right, right.
I've seen that, that's, you know, that's direct location.
Right.
But again, if you look, there's no water in the building, right? But the trucks would be parked on the street.
Yeah, well, they'd be parked right here, this area.
But if they were parked here, they'd be fine. If they were parked right there, they would not get any water damage at all, because the water, the building is so high off the ground, because that's dry.
Right, but I don't think he has those listed as the, he has the parking spots.
Correct.
Because this would be on the street.
Correct.
They'd be out onto the street.
No, that driveway's big enough, that driveway.
Well, we didn't designate that area yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stokely.
Yeah.
So, if you look here, you'd be approaching.
The other side right now.
No, right here, right here.
The front.
Yeah, be approaching.
Yeah. So, you have your spots here and here.
Yep.
And now with water.
Those are high ground too, here and here.
Okay.
Yeah, but these aren't truck spaces, truck spaces over there, 6 and 5.
So, that's what I'm saying, rather just do a site visit.
Yeah.
So, we can look it up. Madam Chair, I'd actually ask that at the site visit, if we could have someone from Conservation, maybe the chairman of the Conservation.
Well, I did talk with Paul Packerwitz today, and I mentioned to him that I would like to also have a site visit, that's even before having this meeting, because of the flooding issue, and Conservation thought it was important that they have a voice in what goes on as well, so I'm all in favor of a site visit. Before we do that, I want to open it up to the public, is there anyone else from the board that would like to make any additional comments or ask any additional questions? You're all set? Okay, so at this time, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application?
Peter Menugie and Tom Eadingmaba, Precinct 10. Familiar with this area, there's a number of issues here, and I hope that the potential owner of the property does take a look at those pictures that Mrs. Salinas sent in. You know, a site visit is fine, what you need to do is a site visit when the flooding takes place, when there is a king tide, February or March, you're not going to see it, the trucks will certainly be there then. You know, this is an existing special permit, and the reason why, why it was specific, the attorney said, talked about the specificity of that special permit, because the board back then was concerned that the impact on the area, and they mandated that things be inside, they specified the vehicles, one van, two one-ton trucks, and a three-quarter ton truck, all capable of being stored inside. I don't think anybody has a problem with a similar business, perhaps not roofing, that stores things inside. There are things further down on Ballard Street that are condominium-type places that things are stored inside. This is an intensive escalation, if you will, of the use of this property, and in particular, the way the existing special permit reads, the way the attorney has posed his information to you, the word addition comes up twice, addition of a number of trucks, addition of. So, the way I'm reading all of this, and the way a future, perhaps judge or board may read it, is that if you grant this, not only you granting, memorializing the four trucks that are there, the van, the two one tons, the one and three-quarter, but you will also be adding an F-650, an F-550, a two F-250s, a mini excavator trailer, and outside storage, and you'll be allowing all that to start up at 7:00 in the morning, idle the diesel trucks in residential neighborhood. I saw someone sign one of those petitions, and a person called me today, said, "You can't support it, you didn't want to go." I don't know what people signed, what they were told, if they were aware of all of this content, but certainly, this is a residential neighborhood, and this was originally advertised on Jack Conway's real estate website as a rental, and the directions, you have to, when you advertise, you have to say how to get there. The direction specifically said to go down Dudley Street and then to Eastern Ave. And I theorized that because Bristow Street at one time, I'm not sure if it still has it, maybe Anthony, you know, the no trucking signs that Christie Champa put up back then. I don't know if they're still there, if they're valid or not, but we've all had a number of complaints from Mrs. Olivero on Dudley Street about trucking. You're adding more trucks to the neighborhood, you're going from four to eight, you're adding a more intensive use, I've seen this place flooded. We had the congressman in, my God, how's it going to look, the town of Saugus is begging the state to please reinvigorate the floodgate study. How are we going to look if they see us in that we're allowing more intensive uses in this flood area? It's okay to keep it what it is, and I'm certain that there's probably someone out there that would rent that for a similar type of business than the roofing, but this is an intense use, and Selectmen Chicalini, you're exactly right, how is this guy going to feel when? I've seen vehicles destroyed down on Houston Avenue that tried to drive through those puddles. The water is getting higher and higher and higher down there, and, you know, I can't, you could have all the site visits you want, but unless you do it during the king tide when that thing is flooded, you're not going to see it for what it is. And the town doesn't even, the fellow at the elevator company has been told he can't fill the potholes in the street because of the Conservation, the Conservation Commission stopped him from doing that, because he's got a lift, a forklift that has little mini tires, it gets stuck in the potholes out there, and they can't, they can't navigate that street. There's a sewer manhole in the middle of that street, that water's going right down in that sewer hole. So, you could have the site visit, but it's not going to change the fact of what's happening in the area, the flooding, you know, your own brother's place, Selectmen Calviano, you saw what happened over there on his property, we've all seen it. There's a house right now at 20 Hewlett Street, it's in a flood zone, it's the cheapest house in Saugus, and no one's touching it because it's in a flood zone. So, I'm not opposed to having a business there, it's already permitted, the board was very careful in 2001 to make sure that they had specific conditions. I would suggest to keep those conditions there, and I hope, and by the way, how much back taxes were owed and has it been paid?
On that property?
Yes.
The Collector Treasurer said that they were made whole, they got the check for it.
But how much, and how long? Wasn't it like $30,000 that was owed over a period of four or five years?
I did see.
I'm glad that the taxes are paid, but obviously.
Yeah, $36,000.
Pardon me?
$36,000.
$36,000 over a period of years. I don't see rewarding this lot with more intensity at the detriment of the neighborhood. So, I'm opposed to it, I think many people in the area are opposed to it, and, you know, I wish the owner well to try to find something that is like-kind to what was there, but I don't think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Chair, can I just make a clarification?
Sure.
We're not requesting an addition of more vehicles.
I, I don't see rewarding this lot with more intensity at the detriment of the neighborhood. So I'm opposed to it, I think many people in the area are opposed to it, and, you know, I would, I wish the owner well to try to find something that is like-kind to what was there, but I don't think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Chair, can I just make a clarification?
Sure.
We're not requesting an addition of more vehicles. If it came across, if it came across that way, it was not intended.
I don't think it came across, see, you have an S-2 permit, and S-2 permit goes with the land.
Yes.
Once you have an S-2 permit, it's in perpetuity. So this would be in addition to what you already have.
But, but we're asking to modify it to replace what's allowed for current vehicles with what we're requesting with our vehicles.
And, and I understand that, so why would we need clarification from our attorney whether we could do that or not? Because an S-2 permit is in perpetuity with the land.
Yeah, I would respectfully suggest it can be modified, that's the purpose of the application.
But that's something that I would need to follow up on.
With our request, and that's what we're asking for, but I just want to make sure that when, you know, you know, we're not asking for additional.
Does the applicant still want to move forward with this, knowing everything that we just shared with you this evening? Yes, sir? You still want to move forward? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
As I said, I, the only way I could even see us moving forward in any way shape or form is at least have a site visit, go down there and see it. I'd ideally ask if you can bring the vehicles, have the vehicles there when we do a site visit so we can see what we're talking about on the trailer and the excavator. Maybe not every one, but maybe your largest truck and your excavator on the, on the flatbed, if you could just bring, have them at the site visit. And so we can see how those fit into the puzzle of where they would fit on the land. A neighbor sent me a photo from a recent flood down there. It's 10 times worse than the photo, I just shared it with the board of Selectmen.
Did you share it with them?
I did, yeah. No, I sent it to you.
Thank you. What we're talking about is pretty serious, and we don't want to, again, put you in harm's way. You really don't want to be putting vehicles in a situation like this. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I would make a motion that we continue this hearing and schedule a site visit that's convenient with the applicant and with us. I'm not sure we can necessarily do that this evening.
Do you, so, do we have your information, sir?
Yes.
So what we can do is, I will ask our clerk, Meredith, to get in touch with you on a few days that would be convenient for you and the other applicants, and something that will work with all five of the board members, as well as, I'm going to ask if the building inspector can also come, as well as the conservation officer.
That would be very much appreciated, thank you.
Okay, so we'll follow back up, so you're going to make a?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
And that is seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And we're beginning in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Did you want to make a motion for two-minute recess?
Madam Chairman, can we have a two-minute recess?
And that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. We're going to take a two-minute recess, thank you. Good evening, we are now back in session. It is now time for our town manager's report. Mr. Crabtree, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a few press releases for updates. Just another update, let me just make sure this is still timely. The comprehensive rehabilitation project for the sewer substitution, substation, subsystem number two. And let's, let me just get the dates on it. This work is, I think it just already began, it just began in the last week or so, and this is more of the sewer substation, subsystem projects that we keep moving on. This is supposed to begin in mid-August and to be completed in mid-December. Just, this is just another reminder, we had put this out, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Extended hours possible for portions of the work. Sewer usage to some homes will be restricted during working hours. Notices will be distributed to impacted residents 72 hours in advance, and again, 24 hours in advance with an additional notice provided once sewer service is restored. There's obviously police details, and there'll be obviously a little bit of inconvenience while we do some of that work. And this, obviously, we, as everyone knows, we've had the administrative consent order, the ACO, over the years, we've completed all that work. And this is us continuing to do some of the subsystems that still have I and I, and have the issues that are now 20 years old, and older. So we're being proactive. Probably people won't appreciate it now, whoever's sitting where we are, sitting 20 years from now will be like, geez, they did a good job at dealing with infrastructure and master planning and capital improvements for the town, and haven't left us with a mess. And I think that's the goal for all of us, and I think that's why we all got involved, and I think we've done a good job of doing that, and I appreciate the board's support. And obviously, this being a priority to continue to do the sewer work and water work and that type of thing. So that's just a reminder, and this stuff is, just to go over the areas that are being approved and that are going to be inconvenienced for a little bit. Central Street, Appleton Street, Lothrup Street, Riverbank Road, Hamilton Street, Round Hill Street, and Pearson Street, and Jasper Street, are the areas that we're doing, and that'll run through December. Also, the town, where once again, which I think is a great event, we get a lot of residents that show up, is a document shredded event that we're having. And the, with the, in conjunction with the Department of Solid Waste and Recycling, we're inviting residents to participate in a document shredding event on Saturday, September 13th, 2025, which is Founder's Day, but this is earlier in the day. Shredding unwanted, sensitive, and confidential documents can help to protect your personal information and to limit chances of falling victim to identity theft. So some of the questions we always get is people say, "Oh, I can bring all my papers down there, newspapers and magazines." That stuff can be recycled curbside for free, we obviously don't have a trash fee, so you pick that stuff up, it's a cost to the town. But that's not the stuff that we're asking people or inviting people to do, it's more the confidential stuff, the banking documents, and, you know, whatever you have that's confidential, bank statements, mortgage statements, whatever it is that you might have in file cabinets. That's the stuff that's, we're having the shredded day for, so we invite people to come up. Acceptable items are paper, folders with brads, manila folders, paper clips, binder clips, notebooks, checkbooks, all that good stuff. So we think it's, we had a ton of people the last couple of years, we had kind of stopped it during the pandemic and hadn't had it, but back in full swing again.
Mr. Manager?
September 13th from 9:00 a.m. to noon time.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So when people come down, do they like bring a big green bag of stuff, and do they do it themselves, or do they just hand it to somebody and they shred it?
Yeah, they hand it to somebody, and they put it right into this big shredder, and it shreds, it's a big commercial thing goes.
So you like stand in line with your big bags of?
Yeah, they usually, the cars line up, and then they'll, one at a time, they take it and put it into the shredder, and they shred it right up.
So you line up with your cars? I've never done it before.
Yeah.
And, and then somebody will, you take it out of the car, and then somebody will take it and shred it for you?
Well, they'll bring it up, and then they'll hand it off, yeah. I mean, it's been a little different each time, but, and again, and this, the, it's up behind the, the Saguas DPW is where the location is, 9:00 to noon time.
Thank you.
And it's for Saguas residents only, so please bring an ID. Also, just some news for people to protect themselves, understand, and we just put some information out today. The West Nile virus risk level in Saguas has been raised to moderate, which you'd ask, well, what does that mean? Moderate, West Nile virus risk level means infection with West Nile virus is likely or has already occurred. So I think we've had some positive tests with some bird eating, bird biting mosquitoes, and we did the last few years as well. But we're sort of, I think, in better shape in the sense of being only moderate than some of the other communities that surround us, and obviously, I think, down the Cape and other places there. Thing, but I think the idea is I would push and encourage people to go on our website and take a look at the press release because it talks about things that, you know, obviously, when there's risk, some years have been worse than others. I don't know if you remember a few years back, there was towns and cities down the Cape, Plymouth, and, you know, I think Cohass, all different places down there that were shutting down nighttime sports because of it. Because once you get a human biting, or a human infected, then it's a bigger issue, and, you know, that hasn't happened this year, as far as I know. But I think people have to take precautions, wearing long sleeves, putting bug spray, take, you know, be careful, especially at dusk. When it gets dark, there's a different type of mosquito that comes out. But I just, I think it's a good idea to follow the Department of Public Health, they have a website, we have a link to that. And I think the other important thing, and we had a lot of people participate over the years in the past, is there is a link to the state. I think it's Northeast Mosquito Something or Another, that we belong to as a consortium, we pay into that as a community. So residents are able to go on there and schedule if they want the state to come out and spray in front of their houses. They don't go on their property, but they spray in front of the houses, which can help prevent some of the, these mosquitoes and from the West Nile virus and Triple E from spreading. So you can go on the website, as long as you do it, I think, by Wednesday at noon time, and this is all on our website within the press release that you can click a link. But if you do it by then, they'll, they come out on Friday, and they'll spray in front of your houses. I think last year, we had over, you know, thousands of people that were signing up for it. I think last year, the year before, whenever, we had a pretty bad mosquito. I think last year, the year before, whenever, we had a pretty bad mosquito date. So that, I think, is important for people to take a look at and get rid of drain, you know, there's all kinds of tips on there about draining standing water, because that's where they are able to accelerate, you know, mosquitoes and what the larva or whatever they call them. You know, so I think there's obviously hours and different things to worry about. Repair screens in your house, install new ones, protect your animals as well, should reduce potential mosquito breeding sites on their property by eliminating standing water from containers. You know, so I think there's just stuff that we need to put on the radar, because we're starting, I think, in the last couple of weeks, have had a few positive hits. And it's the state that monitors this. They put, you know, traps that we don't know where they are throughout all the communities in Massachusetts, and then they go and test the mosquitoes, and that's when they know what they have and what they haven't. Let me just see, one thing I was going to mention also, yeah, so it's Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control. And if you are near, I think if you have on your property sort of water, like ponds and different things, you can also request and they'll come out, I think, and actually go on your property where there's water for that stuff and treat it. So I would just keep an eye on it. You need DEET is what prevents the mosquitoes from coming out and just keep an eye on it. So I would suggest everybody to kind of go to our website to pull some information out. And we'll continue to put more information out as we, as we go. The other thing I'll mention is that we're doing okay, we're, I think, moderate for drought, you know, and with water and lack of rain. So I think we're still doing okay, and we never really fall into that. But down the Cape, down the Cape Guard, they're obviously experiencing some drought, and I think they're, they've been escalated on the chart there for water and water consumption issues. But Saugus is still okay, but obviously, you always want to try to conserve water during dry seasons like we're having now. And just a little, an update, we have, as you know, we're working on the parks and playgrounds, and so that continues, and we'll have some more information, I think, coming up soon enough. But we're finalizing some of the designs for that and for the different parks that we're working on, which is the Golden Hills and Stackpole. So we're trying to keep those, there's a little bit different things that we're doing with one of them. We're trying to keep those together so we can do them together, because the cost of it, of having one contract to be able to bid on both projects is beneficial to the town rather than separating them into two smaller jobs. So we're in the process of trying to maybe order some of the equipment ahead for the lead time, but we're moving forward with those, and I'll have more information probably in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions for the Town Manager this evening?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Riley.
I just have two. First, Mr. Manager, if, is there any update on the veteran service officer? Have we gotten another one yet, or?
So we're in the, we're in the process now. We advertise it like we are supposed to do, and I think we have four or five applicants.
Oh, good.
And so I think they're in the process of trying to interview those, and I think we've had a couple of calls that we're trying to get coverage for, to help assist those people. But it's obviously one of the priorities that we're working on and moving forward with that.
Okay, great, thank you. And second, is the town having any kind of discussion on the 250th country, you know, in July 4th?
Oh, the signing of the decoration.
2026.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the 250th anniversary. Is the town going to be thinking about doing any kind of a celebration?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, I thought about that and have, you know, I think maybe trying to do something, because it would be next year, and try to figure out what that would look like, I think would be a good idea. Obviously, you need a village and volunteers to be able to put something together, so that's something I think we'd definitely be interested in doing. I think people would enjoy something like that. Maybe we incorporate it with some other event that we're doing, you know, that would, or maybe have it separate on a certain date, so we can look into that. If you want to talk offline, we can try to figure something out.
Sure. I think it's too late for a parade, obviously, because everybody's already booked it so much and.
Right, right.
You know, but something we could do for the families and residents and just to celebrate it.
Yeah, so it's, I think it's what, 250 for the signing of the decoration?
250, yeah, July 1776.
1776, yeah, yeah. Well, they have, it's funny, because they have, they have different celebrations for all these different things, you know.
Oh, yeah. No, that's the big one, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we had the one, I think we did 125. I think I have something at my house from, I think there was some kind of thing we did for, you know, a while back, 50 years ago.
We did it in.
What was it?
We did it in 1976. We did it for the bicentennial.
Well, we're kids, right? Yeah, I remember that.
I remember, we, I marched, we.
The Boy Scouts.
A lot of people dressed up in like Indian outfits and things like that.
Trying to.
It was for the bicentennial.
Try to do that today and see what happens.
Yeah. I'll lead the charge, you know I will.
No costumes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for that, because a lot of people have reached out, Janice Gerus being one of them. But the last time, we had a big celebration, Jean Swanson, so many people, it does take a village. There was quite a few people that got involved. The Historical Society did an awful lot to make sure that it all happened.
Right.
So thank you for that. And I was just curious, Mr. Town Manager, how are we doing filling the role of Frank McKinnon? I know that that's a very difficult role to follow.
So we've, that's been advertised as well, and we have some applicants. I think we're, you know, just so people can be aware of it, we're, I think we had it posted as a part-time or full-time position, depending on who the applicant would be, and I think make it flexible. I think that Frank was on from years ago, and he worked like 19 hours a week. I'm not sure that you can get people to come on for 19 hours a week when, you know, what the minimum wage is and what that. I think the idea would be to sort of look for somebody, professionalize it, maybe somebody that has a degree in environmental sciences and maybe has some experience in a certain field. And then maybe if they came on, because, you know, obviously, part-time and full-time, might, part-time might not be attractive if we got the right candidate, maybe the idea would be to see what other things they could function on the other hours with, if it didn't take up that much time within the town to help in another department. You know, so I think that we're sort of open and open-ended, but we do, I think we've had a couple of application, applicants for that. But it's like trying to find the right candidate. If we can get somebody that has, I think, the requisite degrees and experience, I think it would help professionalize and sort of, and, you know, and again, if it's somebody that's looking for full-time, because I think, trying to find somebody that wants to do it 19 hours, that has experience, that is what they're doing. I'm not sure, it's very technical now, and as you know, everything has gotten much more complicated. But I think, you know, we're open, I'm open to trying to find a thing, and if it's too many hours, then I'm happy to, you know, have them work in another department where they could, you know, make up for the hours, because I think most people are probably going to look for a full-time job, unless some political thing comes along and says, oh, give so-and-so a job, and it's not really the right fit. I would say that I think the conservation has changed over the last 20 years, in the sense of the rules and the information and the expertise that's needed is on a whole other level. I think you see that on the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Board of Health, all this, all these different things, you know, you have volunteers, and you really need people, I think, professionals to be able to give a technical and legal expertise. I mean, all the development and different things, everybody's in front of these boards, different developers and different people all the time, and the conservation's in the same boat, so. But anyways, that's.
And their clerk, Stephanie, is retiring. Her last day is Friday, so we need to, I assume that you've already.
Yeah, we have coverage for that, yeah.
Great. Yes, we wish her well on her retirement. She's, she's, has done so much work for the town over the years.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the Town Manager?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, just a couple of things. I got a call from a resident at 73 Dudley Street, if you could just look into, they got a dead tree in front of their house.
73 Dudley?
Dudley, yes. And then, I know the chairman and I both received an email from a resident who wishes to be anonymous, but.
Those are always the best ones.
Yeah, complaining, he did give his name, but.
Oh, okay.
Complaining about a potential boarding house, rooming house at 7 Hayden Road.
Seven what?
It's a single-family home that's sold and they converted it into a rooming house.
Hayden Road, H-A-Y-D-Y.
I think, I think that's already on the radar. I think my office got the same call or email.
I reached out to Michael Vecchia.
Yeah, I think we're already investigating that.
Okay. And then another one on Bennett, Bennett Ave, too.
Bennett? Do you know what number?
I'll give you the number. I have it, I don't, I don't remember it off.
And that's a rooming house issue, too?
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thanks, Madam.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Anything else?
Seeing none, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. We have the June 11th, 2025 minutes to approve.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the June 11th minutes.
That's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Next, we have the June 24th, 2025 minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda is appointments. We have Frank Federico, and he's asking to be reappointed as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll offer that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, and I believe that's a three-year appointment to expire March 31st, 2028. That's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Sweeney. He's requesting to be reappointed as the parking hearing officer for the town of Saugus, and his term would expire 7/31/2026.
So moved, Madam Chair.
And that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalene's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. It is now time for our second citizens' comments. If the evening is there, anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none. We're going to move on to members' motions. Selectman Riley, will you please start us?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, if I could, we only have three business meetings left.
That's correct.
For the, before the election. So if we could schedule an update meeting with the manager before we end.
Sure, well, let's, we'll pick it. Mr. Manager? What Selectman Riley is asking for is another update meeting from you, and we can schedule that through your office?
Sure. On the same date of the meeting, or?
Yeah, we did that, six o'clock, right?
Is that okay? We have a meeting on September 16th, and we have a meeting on September 30th. Which day for an update meeting, maybe an hour before the meeting, would that work for you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
An hour before the meeting?
Sure.
If you could just let Meredith know what day is better for you, and we'll pick one of those two days.
Sounds good.
Thank you. And I just want to wish, they're going to be back to school before we meet again, so I just want to wish the students and teachers well and have a very successful school year, because summer's almost over. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have nothing else tonight. I've worn over my topics with the manager, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Serino, please.
Madam Chairman, I just want to wish everybody, I hope they had a happy summer vacation. It's kind of back to reality now, and I want to wish the kids a lot of luck in school and the teachers also. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Serino. Selectman Vice Chair, Chicalene, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just short and sweet, Mr. Manager, thank you for taking care of several items. Actually, this week, many of them were checked off for the DPW, so if you could pass along to the gentleman over there that Jackson Street was taking care of.
Oh, good, okay.
One of the ones on Arcadia, a couple other places, they were.
I think there's one or two other ones that I was still working on.
Yeah, they're in process, but those ones, I got text messages thinking that they were addressed, and one of them was a safety, and they jumped right on it, and that was great, so thank you for that.
I'll let Brendan know he's been on vacation, so I'll let him know when he gets back.
Thank you.
We got him done.
So, a couple of things, please. The first is, I want to mention the Knights of Columbus are having another one of those large flea markets and crafts fairs. Knights of Columbus is located at 57 Appleton Street in Saugus, and that's Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 to 3:00. So it's a lot of fun if you are around. Next, we want to mention Founder's Day. We're not going to be meeting before Founder's Day, which is Saturday, September 13th, from 9:00 to 3:00. We have nonprofits and vendors and great food and a lot of fundraisers for, and we got the Boy Scouts, we have all the schools out there. It is a wonderful, wonderful day. I encourage everyone to come out to Founder's Day. You see friends and family. Don't miss it. It's always a wonderful, wonderful time. And we also have Men and Women's of the Year, and the board just signed citations for the Man and the Woman of the Year, so we're excited for that as well. I wanted to mention that Meredith and I have spent a great deal of time over the last three months comparing Saugus fees to other communities. Your package includes an extensive analysis for your review. It's on an Excel spreadsheet. I want to make sure that each board member has enough time to review this analysis before I officially put it on the agenda for a formal discussion. Once the board feels comfortable having that discussion, and the board wants to, and we'll have a meeting to suggest updates, we would then need to post for a public hearing on whatever those updates might be. I don't believe that the board has done an extensive review since 2018, and we had COVID in between and all that. So it's important that the members, all, all members have enough time to consider the fees and take a look at what other communities have. Also, the Bring Your Own Booze policies from other communities have been emailed to the board members, and the hard copies are in your packet. If the board wants to continue to allow for BYOB, it's important, I believe, to have a written policy on what is allowed. For example, patrons bringing in alcoholic beverages for personal consumption must order food. It must be a full-service restaurant. Each, it must be the responsibility of the establishment to ensure each patron consuming alcoholic beverage be at least 21 years old. So if board members would like to put this on the agenda for a formal discussion at one of our next three meetings, please let me know, and we can do that.
Thank you.
I want to wish everybody a happy rest of the summer, happy and safe Labor Day to everybody, and wishing the teachers and the students a great year ahead. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion to the chairman?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
And that's seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.